So thanks for coming out this evening. I'm Evan Flato, President of Mount Sinai Roosevelt. We have Ken Davis, CEO of the Mount Sinai Health System. Dennis Charney, Dean of the Icahn School of Medicine at Mount Sinai. And it's exciting to have a chance to talk to you all. Many of you know me, but I'm a practicing orthopedic surgeon. My last job was as Chairman of Orthopedics for the system and at Mount Sinai. And it was a darn good job. I didn't give up that job easily because it was a great job, but I thought this was a very exciting opportunity. As many of you know, I was an intern and resident here at Roosevelt 30 years ago. I run into people in the halls who knew me then. It's kind of amazing. They look much younger than me. I can't understand how they know me from then. My wife and I first lived together in 515 in staff housing. I was born at St. Luke's. I'm a lifelong West Sider. In fact, you know, we worked with the William F. Ryan Centers. I knew Bill Ryan as a kid. My mother worked with him. So it's really very, very special for me. I feel like I'm home again. And I really look forward to this. As I said, I gave up a great job because I thought this was an even better job. And I think we're going to do great things here. The Mount Sinai Health System, as you know, was formed by the unanimous agreement of Continuum Health and Mount Sinai in the fall. And we've become a truly integrated healthcare system. Seven hospitals, 3,000 employed physicians, about 4,000 voluntary physicians, 17 ambulatory surgery centers, seven hospitals, many platforms, under one great top 20 medical school, one leadership. And I think this scale really lets us compete in healthcare reform with the network of primary care and the ability to synergize excellence. It's not a hub-and-spoke model. There's going to be centers of excellence around the system. And as an example, we'll be welcoming here in two weeks, I think, Montu Gupta from Colombia, who is a world-class stone surgeon. And this will be the Stone Center for Mount Sinai System. We'll be shutting down the lithotripsy at Mount Sinai and doing it all here. So it's not going to be everything at one place. It's going to be centers of excellence around the system. And we're going to, with Keaton Badani joining Frank Lowe and Craig and the other great urologists here, will be a great urology department. And we're going to do wonderful, you know, wonderful, wonderful things here. I think that St. Luke's Roosevelt has historically been one hospital within the continuum system. It's still one hospital under one license. But we're going to have Art Gianelli leading St. Luke's and myself leading here because each hospital has a chance in its own neighborhood and with its own community to have a different strategic direction, even while synergizing the great programs together. There'll still be one medical staff, chairs of departments that can manage at both sites. But this gets us a chance to get involved in our own direction. This neighborhood, which is so dynamic and growing, with Hudson Yards going up about 20 blocks away, with all the buildings around here, the wonderful physical plant, I think, gives us an opportunity to be a hospital that really is a gateway to the West Side in terms of cardiac services, our great emergency room, pediatric outpatient and others, but also to have great elective surgical services in vascular surgery and bariatric and orthopedics and spine and in urology, obviously, as I mentioned. There's going to be a chance to ask questions at the end, but I wanted to give you some overview of some of the exciting new areas. There are going to be challenges, to be sure. We're in a difficult fiscal environment. We have to be fiscally prudent. But we think we have the scale to make the kind of investments that will allow us to leverage excellence and to have a really great and dynamic program here. One of the strengths of a system like Mount Sinai is even though our team is leading this hospital and we're going to make Roosevelt as great as it can be, but we also have resources we can draw in. It's not just decision makers over us, as you may remember from the continuum system, but we have talent we can bring into it. So for example, Mike McCary, who is System OR Chief that I've worked with before, is helping us to improve things, working with Alan Santos in anesthesia and George Todd and the Surgery Committee. But we have Leon Borenstein taking over peri-op here. We have great work in Bintu, working on SPD to improve our sterile supply. We have a new nursing leader for the OR. And so I'm going to be making nursing rounds with the nurses and with leaders of housekeeping, et cetera, in the operating room. And I'll be operating there. I think that trying to improve the patient experience and the functioning is a big challenge that we really face. And we have to be very serious and work very hard about that. We're trying to grow and expand the clinical enterprise. I mentioned some of the urological recruits. George Todd and John Lantis and Al Ben Venisti are working not only to form links in vascular surgery with Mike Maron and his team, but also to recruit new talented surgeons that can be part of our vascular surgery enterprise, as well as other surgical recruits. Obviously, we're in the, because I stepped down as orthopedic chair, we're in the midst of a search for a new orthopedic leader for the system. And this is a wonderful site for orthopedics. First of all, the great traditions here and the history here and even what's going on right now with George Zambetti and his work with sports medicine at Fordham, the CV Star Hand Center and their tradition of excellence and leadership, the work of Phil Baumann and Bill Hamilton with ballet medicine and Broadway shows, Doug Eunice and minimally-invasive approaches to the hip, et cetera. So we have a rich tradition. We have great people here. And this is a great physical plant for it. So I certainly see a bright future, you know, for orthopedics here. So those are some of the things that are going on. And I certainly will need all of your help. And I hope we can do great things together. And I'd invite you, anyone who have questions, and also for Ken Davis or Dennis Charney or myself.
It's good if you come to the microphone because we may be recording this for national television.
Will each hospital be marketed individually? And will there be like a specific focus for each one, orthopedics, cardiovascular?
Well, I think that marketing is going to do two things. It's going to brand the system with Mount Sinai. We're going to see signage going up as early as, we already have some signs up, but next month, there's going to be a lot of signage here about Mount Sinai Roosevelt and the Mount Sinai School of Medicine. And I think there's a lot of power with that brand as it goes throughout the system. But in addition, there are going to be strategic plans. We have clinical institutes, for example Respiratory, that go across the system. We also have service line leaders who are trying to figure out the best place for each program. There, of course, are going to be many programs that need to be strong and vital at every center, like cardiology. But there may be other very specialized focuses that need to be at one center. And I think marketing is going to figure out and work with us on what's the best way to present those in the best light. But I think that we also want to be very mindful of the dynamic community we're in. And also, the community for Roosevelt extends all the way up into Westchester and north of the city. Many have a West Side tradition of referrals. So I think we want to market to those communities for Roosevelt in addition to marketing across the system.
Just to add to that, that as Evan said, the model is not a hub-and-spoke model. It's to have centers of excellence throughout the system. And I think orthopedics is a good example. Again, as Evan mentioned, we are recruiting for a new system Chair of Orthopedics. We're right in the middle of that. And we've got some spectacular candidates. And I would expect that most of the growth in orthopedics is going to occur here. And, you know, we'll be working with the new chair, probably to have an office, maybe even the main office of the department here at Roosevelt. Urology is another, you know, great example. Ash Tawari, our new System Chair of Urology, has been in total recruitment mode. We'll be building a spectacular urology center here at Roosevelt, among other areas.
I would want to add a point about marketing. Don't be deceived by what you see in the press, you know, the typical New York Times, Daily News ad, or what you might see in TV. The most effective marketing is digital today. And most of our budget, which is substantial, is all in digital. A lot of it is in digital marketing. So what we're going to work with Evan to do is make sure that we have the right website, the right portals, the high results in Google searches and other search engine searches. And that's really what brings in patients.
Also, clinical excellence and research and teaching prominence can be very important, especially in niche areas or in areas of excellence. So for example, I was talking to Fez Bora, who, you know, with his Airway Center and some of the great work he's doing in tracheal reconstruction, in growing tracheas and doing stem cell work. But the synergies with, for example, the Black Family Stem Cell Center at Mount Sinai could be very substantial. So leveraging, you know, we may be able to get a higher grade of residents and fellows. And also, that kind of research that gets national attention can be very powerful in driving the very sophisticated consumers we have now. Patients research this on the web, as Ken said, and they really know where the best places to have different procedures are and different things. And so I think that's going to be an important part. We don't call it traditional marketing, but that's an important part of achieving prominence that helps you grow as a center. Yes?
As we look at increasing and improving the centers of excellence and creating these different service lines, are there opportunities within the Roosevelt campus to expand the landscape, to increase available space?
Well, we're doing a space evaluation now, looking at all potential programs and how our space is used now. But yes, I think Roosevelt has a big advantage in that we do have a great physical plan and we have some space that's underused. So I think there is an opportunity, as we prioritize excellent programs, to build and grow them if they have a chance to achieve excellence and a reasonable business return. We have to be sensible financially, but yes, I think we can. Yes, please.
Hello. My name's Carolyn Brockington. I'm the Director of the Stroke Center at St. Luke's and Roosevelt. And I just wanted to toot our own horn for a moment because I wanted to know what was going to happen to the Neuroscience Center. We had a very strong center here at Roosevelt. In addition to giving TPA the last four years more than the other Manhattan centers, including Mount Sinai. So I was interested in hearing what the plans were for neuroscience, both at St. Luke's and Roosevelt.
Well, I don't want to speak to St. Luke's. There'll be a separate Town Hall that Art will be leading. We're very proud of the tradition of neuroscience here. And I've met with some of the leaders here. And we certainly think there are areas of growth. One thing that is a possibly very synergistic effort would be spine because of the neuroscience aspect of spine in neurosurgery and orthopedic spine. We certainly need to be able to manage stroke and outreach to the community and emergency care. But we haven't finished a full evaluation, you know, long-term of what those strategic goals. I've met with Susan Bressman and some of the leaders at Sinai, and that's a work in progress.
Okay. Thank you.
What I would add to that is--
The brain is important.
And we agree.
We agree.
Everyone needs one.
As being neuroscientist. We've got an additional philanthropic gift from the Merkin Family. And so we're going to be creating a Clinical Neuroscience Institute for the system called the Merkin Family Clinical Neuroscience Institute. And we're just starting the strategic planning process. But we see that as an important area of excellence for the system. And we'll work with you and others in defining what should be where and how do we build it going forward. So we're just starting the process.
Okay. Thank you.
But, you know, but your question raises an important point. I mean, strategic planning is not just deciding what you're going to do but what you're not going to do. And anytime you have a rational system approach, you're going to make some choices. And not every center will do everything. And there are always going to be people invested with a history at one site. And there may be some difficult choices. But we're going to offer a chance for all these excellent people to regroup wherever the decision is made to have some program. So if there's a program that's not going to be continued here, there'll be a chance to have that program within the system and still leverage that excellence.
Hi, I'm Sue Fenton. I'm an Associate Trustee, and I also work in the Department of Psychiatry. I've heard no discussion at all today about psychiatry and behavioral health. Could you give us some idea?
I have two psychiatrists up here on the panel.
I know you do. That's what I'm asking. We have two psychiatrists. Could you give us some idea of the future plans for the department, if there's any that are, because we haven't heard psychiatry mentioned at all?
Well, I met with the leadership of psychiatry about a week ago, two weeks ago. And we were talking about ambitious plans for an outpatient program. Our system has not had, and at Mount Sinai, we haven't had a very robust private practice, psychiatry practice, for example. And they thought that this might be a good site to have that on the West Side. I think we have to look at all of the pieces. St. Luke's will likely have a more of a behavioral health focus. And so some aspects of those programs on the inpatient basis and in dealing with addiction psychiatry, et cetera, may be more focused at St. Luke's. But we certainly want to have a robust psychiatric presence here.
Evan said it very well, but we have to keep in mind what is the imperative that's coming down from New York State around behavioral health. They are going to be putting most of all the Medicaid and dual-eligible patients into managed care. And they're doing that because they want to decrease the number of beds that are in psychiatry across New York State and have more ambulatory programs. The Mount Sinai Health System now has more psychiatric beds than any other system in the state. So obviously, we will be one of the programs that the state wants to decrease the number of inpatient beds. Both being psychiatrists, Dennis and I, having lived through all kinds of reforms and also having engaged in many different aspects of psychiatry, including addiction psychiatry. I mean, we know the pitfalls here and what are some of the problems. Our good fortune is Sabina Lim, who's been heading up the reformulation of healthcare in behavioral health and is in tune with the issues of population management in behavioral health, is really a leader in this. So be assured we're going to do what's right, but also be assured that the imperative here is to change. And we don't know what it's going to look like in a couple of years.
Thank you.
Other questions?
You've heard this before. We're psychiatrists. We can wait. Wait till somebody talks.
I'm a surgeon. I never wait. I'm out of the room by now. Questions?
I just wanted to ask a little bit about the plans for primary care and preventative healthcare, which touch on some of the things you mentioned in terms of the Affordable Care Act, expanded Medicaid to bring more people into primary medical care, and how that fits into the vision of Mount Sinai in the merger.
Well, the vision is very strong for primary care. And part of the reason to have the system is to have an institute of primary care spanning across the different sites. And that's a major achievement is to get a much larger primary care footprint. And there are many investments planned, many new groups. You want to say anything?
This is critical. I mean, population health is the future. We're moving away from fee-for-service medicine. We're going to be moving to managed care and population health. The gatekeepers are the primary care doctors. The primary care doctors are enormously valuable. Think about this as a paradigm. In fee-for-service medicine, the people who provided margin were the surgeons doing the most complex cases. In population management, where you get a premium and the idea is to hold on to as much of it as you can, those very terrific surgeons are suddenly a cost center. And the people who are helping you are the people who are keeping patients well. So your primary care doctors, who are preventing readmissions, preventing disease, they're the most critical people in the system suddenly. So everything changes.
Except the surgeons who do a really good job--
They're very valuable. They're terrific.
And keep them, they don't get readmitted.
That's right. You want to know what that's about? What the surgeons become about are bundled payments in which post-acute care is the variable in how we differentiate among them. So what that means is the surgeons with the lowest complications, the shortest length of stay, the shortest time in post-acute care settings are the real winners and the real valuable people. So the really skilled surgeons become very, very terrific too. But what we start to think about is a completely different economic model in which prevention and wellness and the shorter length of stay and no readmissions, no emergency room visits, that's the best system.
It's also about team building. You know, in orthopedic surgery, for example, a huge part of the cost to an insurer is the post-op care, the rehab days, the therapy. And if you can have a team that works well together, both rehab, orthopedics, primary care, you can deliver a quality product with very low costs. And that's really what it's all about, knowing your costs and managing it. But that takes teamwork. And we had some consultants in from some of the top places to look at how we did integration, for example, in orthopedics. We looked at Cleveland Clinic. We looked at Wash University, Washington University-St. Louis. We looked at a couple of models. And that's very important. And that has to be done across all the clinical disciplines. So it's not just a matter of your individual performance, but it's being able to be part of a team. Not only the team that gives great patient care on the floor or the team in the OR, but the pre-op care and the post-op care so that we can say to an insurer or to a company, we know our cost, we know our quality, and that's how we're going to compete in this time. Yes?
Jason Fowler, rheumatologist here. The backbone of the hospital in the past has been a core group of voluntary physicians who are being chiseled away little by little. And there's now probably more full-time or employed physicians, I would say, than the voluntaries at the hospital. And the way the insurers are now operating, it is very difficult for voluntaries to develop any lines of communication with the insurance companies, establish fee schedules with the insurance companies, independent of an IPA or a hospital entity. And I know a number of our community have drifted off to other hospital centers over time. And I just want to know what type of resources Mount Sinai has or will commit to ensuring that there is negotiation with the insurance companies for those who are not employees of the hospital.
Well, you know, I can speak first. We have a very vibrant voluntary community at Mount Sinai Hospital. When I was Chair of Orthopedics there, I recruited to both the voluntary staff and the full-time staff. I recruited several of the voluntary surgeons personally. When I recruited, I would offer them both models, you know, what makes, you know, most sense. They are both important contributors. We assign OR time to voluntary and full-time surgeons based on usage, independent of their status. Residents are assigned based on educational value. Voluntary surgeons participate in residence selection, medical student teaching, et cetera. So the model I'm used to is of both groups being very important. And a lot of it just depends on what makes sense in each model. Sometimes full-time practice makes more sense as we do more integrated care. We have bargaining units, associations, that negotiate managed care rates for the voluntary surgeons at Mount Sinai. I don't know the latest, maybe in terms of what's being done for the system, but we've traditionally negotiated rates for the voluntary doctors as well as for the full-time doctors. And we certainly want to continue that part of our book of business.
Yeah, that's true. And in some cases, the voluntaries have wanted to become part of our faculty practice. And we are working out ways to make that user-friendly for the voluntaries to become full-time so that it's, if anything, it's better financially for the voluntary faculty members because they will get the rates that our full-time faculty have negotiated. So we want to have as many options for the voluntary and the full-time faculty as possible so that if you want to stay voluntary, we're going to support you. If you think becoming part of our full-time FPA practice, we're going to make it so that there's not a downside, but there's an upside.
So, you know, we have an IPA for the voluntary faculty. And we negotiate the rates. And we've done as best we can. But the question Dr. Fowler raised goes way beyond this room, as I think we all know. And that is, again, to the macroeconomics of where healthcare is going. The exchanges produce the need for the insurance companies to be highly competitive with each other. And New York State is one of the most competitive exchanges that exists. And New York has more insurance products than almost any other state. So what that's done is caused the insurance companies to ask, how can we narrow the networks as much as we can to control the physicians so that their utilization of resources is as little as it can be in order to maximize what they're left with after those reduced premiums that is happening in New York State? So in a capitalist exchange, in a competitive marketplace, the doctors are finding out that if they are single individuals, they can be very well left out of networks. And if you're in our IPA, as much as we've tried to get those rates, as good as they can be for our FPA, they're just not. And we negotiate just as hard. So we have a lot of models that can work to get you the advantages of being a full-time faculty and keep you in your office. There's no necessity that you come into the Brodsky Building or the, you know, Mount Sinai's big buildings. We can work this out. But, you know, this is a little tsunami that's affecting everybody and changing the way we do business. And we're going to try to make it as attractive as we can. But I guess what I'm asking is, when you begin to compare what's happening and when you see the transition of a lot of voluntaries to full-time, don't blame us. I think people are making the decisions that are in their own best interests, and we're going to try to encourage that.
It's happening all over the country. I mean, when I go to orthopedic meetings, the number of people working for hospital systems is going up and up. And that's a voluntary, that's not a plot. That's just the way the natural economics, the scale that's needed to compete comes about.
And we've tried to make it, if somebody wants to stay voluntary, we want to do everything we can to make that attractive. On the other hand, you know, if you're interested in possibly becoming a full-time faculty member with the better rates we can get, we've oriented our faculty appointments to really show the full-time clinician that we value them as much as the full-time researcher. So for example, now in our Appointments and Promotions Committee, we have a new track called the Practice Track that you can become a professor, and it's for people who are 80% or more clinical.
When I was a medical student at Mount Sinai, the number of full-time faculty were just chairman. Probably you can count them on two hands.
And there were some voluntary chairs.
Right. And the best doctors for decades at Mount Sinai were always the voluntary physicians. I mean, these were the iconic figures. So the tradition at Mount Sinai has always been great voluntaries. I have enormous respect for them. My personal doctors are Mount Sinai voluntaries. So don't think that in any way we think that the voluntary is any less great a clinician and in many ways a better clinician than some full-time people. So we don't make those distinctions. It's just the economics are forcing certain decisions for people to make that's making it hard to stay in those practices.
Other questions?
Hi, Dr. Flato. It's been 37 years. Welcome back. Okay, I'm Barbara Abity. I work in the PACU.
You were in kindergarten, I think.
No. I think I'm a little older than you. From a nursing perspective, where the blood and guts of the hospital?
Absolutely.
And the patient wakes up and sees us. The patient sees us on the floor. The patient pulls their colite. How are we going to get better patient satisfaction with staffing issues?
Well, we've done some analysis and we want to have appropriate staffing across the system. We've noticed levels that can vary. And we are certainly committed to having appropriate staffing for all of our patients. And we totally agree with you that this is the lifeblood of the hospital and our key deliveries of care.
I'm Carolyn Waldron. I'm in the OB-GYN department. I'm a medical editor. And I was just wondering what the future of obstetrics and the LND and the OB-GYN department here at Roosevelt is.
The future is bright. We're very proud of the great obstetrical record here, of the volume of deliveries we have. And it's a key part of our strategic plan. I've met with Mike Broadman, who's our System Leader, about this. And we want to keep it great and go into the future with it.
Fez Bora, I just want to thank the panel for being here. And I also want to take this opportunity to emphasize that I think while times are difficult, we here at Mount Sinai, St. Luke's and Roosevelt have a wonderful opportunity. We're so well-located on the West Side of Manhattan. There's really nothing south of 168th Street. So here's our opportunity to really shine and make these two hospitals a jewel in the crown for the system. So that's my take on that.
I'll give you your envelope later. Thank you.
So my question, however, was-- So my question, however, was for Dean Charney, and that regards the research facilities that we have at St. Luke's and Roosevelt Hospitals, and particularly the wonderful animal facilities we have at Mount Sinai-St. Luke's. So I wanted to get your take on that, and will there be more resources perhaps? And how do we plan to preserve and perhaps grow those wonderful animal research facilities? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your first comment. Also, I just want to elaborate on that, then I'll answer the question. And that is, you know, while Ken outlined all the challenges, and they are definitely true, if somebody's going to solve this problem, in terms of delivering high-quality health care at lower costs, it's going to be us. Because of the scope of our system, and because of, you know, having a great medical school which forms the foundation. So we can essentially lead the nation in figuring out how to do that together with the external challenges. And we are optimistic about doing that together. Regarding research, here's how we're looking at research for the system. And it's somewhat similar to how we're conceptualizing Centers of Excellence throughout the system from a clinical perspective. On one hand, it doesn't make sense that we have wet labs, which are very expensive, at every component, every part of our system. Most of the wet lab work, that's the laboratory animal work, most of it, not all of it, but most of it will be at the campus in Upper East Side. But that also means that if you're a faculty member at any one of the member hospitals, and you want to do some basic research, you know, we're going to help you do it, but we can't have wet labs at every site. It's too expensive, and you need a critical mass of people working together to really do breakthrough science. On the other hand, given the scope of our system, the millions of patients that we are responsible for, and eventually we're going to have one electronic medical record, we can be an engine of discovery in determining, for example, how advances in genomic medicine guide treatment and help us prevent disease. We can do larger clinical trials in the most serious of diseases, in cancer, in heart disease, in mental health, together, more than just about any other system in the United States. So we are going to build translational research, clinical trial research, epidemiologic research. We're probably going to create a new institute on population health in terms of trying to understand how to best deliver health care to large populations, to look at the research that will guide our clinical programs. So the clinical research footprint is going to grow, the translational footprint's going to grow, and we're going to right-size where we do the wet lab research so that all the facilities are excellent. So it won't be at every location, but at some of the locations.
And since I still have a laboratory where I do research in my free time, I was hoping we'd put the labs here, but we haven't. I would just like to finish with echoing what Dennis said, that despite all the challenges, all the reasons we have to hang together in all the difficult times, not only do we as a system have a great opportunity to succeed, but Roosevelt with its location, its physical plant, it's, you know, we have beds that we don't staff, that we could expand, we have places we could build ORs. You know, the eyes of the system are on us. I mean, this is really part of the future of the system, because this is where real organic growth could occur, that isn't landlocked like the Mount Sinai Hospital campus. So not only does everyone in the system want us to succeed, they need us to succeed. And so not only do I think we can do it, and do I expect us to do it, but we will have the support of everyone in the system helping us to do it.
David Baskin, if we are all part of the same family, I don't understand why we can't negotiate the same enhanced fee-for-service for voluntary physicians as you do for full-time physicians.
It's a legal, as I understand it, it's a legal risk. Only a group can only negotiate for its own, you know, a full-time group that's an integrated practice negotiates for itself. And then when you have separate practitioners, you can have an IPA that negotiates for different practices. Correct me if I'm wrong.
It's an utterly separate negotiation, and they can't cross-talk.
It's anti-trust.
Yeah, I mean, we'd like you to get the highest rates possible, but we just, you know, it is what it is.
I'd be happy to talk to you more about that, by the way, if you want to speak to me afterwards.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Zach Kennesi from the Spencer Cox Center for Health. My question is about sort of evaluating your success in terms of this merger. Do you have an evaluation plan and outcomes in mind for each of the various institutes? Because often I think that stuff should be set up early on in this process.
That's a great question. I mean, our goal is to have uniform quality and excellence throughout the system. As we said, it's not a hub-and-spoke model. We have very ambitious goals in patient satisfaction and quality, to be number one in the region and in the top 10% nationally. We want to be fiscally responsible and have productive programs throughout. And we want to have Centers of Excellence that are world-class, so that where we can do it at every site, we will, where we want to focus it. And I think those are the kind of metrics that are being developed. And on the academic side, we look at publications and national prominence, you know, et cetera. So maybe Dennis wants to expand on that.
We're all researchers in our past life, and so we're very data-driven. We don't make decisions without looking at data. Generally don't go by a gut feeling. And so we have reams of data that we use literally every day to track how well each of the hospitals are doing, how well the practices are doing. We actually get down to the individual doctor to look at patient satisfaction, the productivity, whether it's a researcher or a clinician. And we got broad goals for each of the hospitals in terms of patient satisfaction, financial performance, readmissions. So there are literally thousands of variables that our teams are looking at to make sure that we perform well at the individual, the group, the hospital, and the system level.
We have a dashboard that management keeps. Evan will have that dashboard. You will see it as it's appropriate to each of the metrics. There are quality metrics, there are financial metrics, there are academic metrics. The dashboard is red, green, or yellow, depending on whether they're meeting the goal for this year. And there are audacious goals that we have over the long term. It's like Evan said, we want to be in quality, the best in the region, and as the country, top 10 percentile, which is very hard, given some of the socioeconomic demographics of our system. But we still have ambitious goals, and we're going to strive to meet them.
And one thing I would emphasize, this is a very transparent organization. We, you know, I've heard, when I've talked to doctors and many of you, as I've had my meetings, people are concerned, "How are we going to find things out? What are we told?", et cetera. We try to put everything out there, and it's very available. We'll be very honest with you, and I expect you to be very honest with me. And you should know the metrics we're working for, and we'll share them with you. We're going to have, for example, patient satisfaction metrics, not only down to the physician, but down to the unit, so that each nurse manager will know what his or her unit is doing. Every physician leader will know what his or her department or service is doing. And that'll be true of financial performance and many others. And the other thing is, we don't expect each and every program to make money. We understand that some programs are subsidized by other programs, or that some systems, if cases are being referred, for example, if we're seeing cardiology patients here and sending the heart transplants or the heart surgery to another hospital, we get credit for that. The key thing is that as a group, as a unit, as a system, that we're fiscally responsible and that we're meeting the targets we're setting. It's not like everyone in the room has to generate a surplus, but no one can not be living up to the potential that they have and what's expected of them. I'm not a psychiatrist, so, oh, yes.
Sorry, one more. Wendy O'Brien, Director of Nursing. Given those socioeconomic differences in our community, how will we plan to address the community regards to those patients that are actually our greatest strain on our organization with issues with homelessness, with issues with length of stay just based on availability of resources for certain individuals? Or the Addictions Institute that impact us? And looking at it from a solely nursing perspective, I can say that it is a significant strain on the frontline staff, as well as, you know, providers, just to address the readmission issue, to address the length of stay, to address the, you know, the transfer to additional, you know, post-hospitalizations, you know, level of care.
Well, no question, that's a very important challenge. And in terms of meeting readmission criteria, et cetera, we have to address that. And we're trying to look at that through, you know, with our Chief Medical Officer, Jeremy Bowles, and his system, across the system. We're trying to develop ways of supporting our patient populations in follow-up after discharge, and we're going to have to be creative in that. It's definitely a challenge, and it's one of the things that makes it very difficult, practicing in, say, an urban environment and meeting criteria that are set. But if you look at the way health care is changing, these criteria are set nationally. We can't get every one of them adjusted for our location. So we're going to have to rise to meet that challenge.
At a local level, we have a program at Mount Sinai that we're spreading through the whole system called PAC, which is a post-acute care program. And it's led by Claudia Colgan. It's funded by the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Innovation. It's been enormously successful. There are 106 or so of those grants in the country, they're multimillion-dollar grants. Ours has been the most successful in the country. We've decreased readmissions nearly 50%, EDU's 50% roughly. We'll be bringing that here with Claudia, and helping you with case managers and people who are identified with the skill sets to help those who come from the most impoverished backgrounds to be able to stay well at home instead of being readmitted. But that said, we know better than anybody else that socioeconomic factors can have major determinants of health care. NQF has just set out a series of guidelines, which set out and asks CMS and others who rate hospitals to factor in socioeconomic status when they do that. Because not to do so disadvantages those who treat those patients who often need care the most, who are the most impoverished, who often earn Medicaid, or have no ability to pay. And it really disadvantages hospitals that have really great values, like our system does. I've argued this in Washington, we argued this with the heads of CMS. And they weren't very responsive. But now that NQF has come out with these guidelines, I think there's a chance that all these ratings may be adjusted for the kinds of issues that we have to deal with. I mean, we're talking about some readmissions issues and some other issues that are unfair to us.
I just had one other point. You mentioned addictions, and when we look at the system as a whole, as Ken mentioned, we have more psychiatric beds than any other, you know, system in the state and among the most in the country for any one system. And in our analysis at this point, we probably have too many psychiatry beds and not a strong enough outpatient program in behavioral health, that there's too much cycling of admissions in and out of the psych units for the system. And so it's much better for the patient, much better for our system financially, if we enhance outpatient and reduce the cycling of patients into our addiction and general psychiatry units.
Yes?
Is everyone okay? Hi, I'm a clinical coordinator here, I'm like, very brand-new, and...
Welcome.
Thank you, welcome.
I'm new too.
So I'm wondering if we're going to be expanding in research, and expanding in things like clinical trials, but also concentrating our resources at the various centers, but not all of them? Obviously, there'll be a higher demand for those resources at the centers that are expanding, and I'm wondering how we should start planning, you know, us on the ground with the research, to utilize those resources when they're not going to be at our centers? And is that going to be possible? Is that sort of how it's going to work?
Yeah, so part of our job is to make all of you interested in research aware of the resources that we have that are now available throughout the system. For example, we've recently reoriented the IRBs, so that if you get approval at one place, you have approval to do that research across the system. We're enhancing our grants management program, grant writing assistance across the system, helping you make connections to scientists throughout the system, so that you can have clinical trials going on in more than one site, so you can, you know, take advantage of the system.
The new program.
Which one?
You know, with Lakshmi.
Oh, mentoring, you know, so I've named Lakshmi Devi, one of our outstanding scientists, to a dean position for faculty enrichment and mentoring. She'll be visiting, if she hasn't visited Roosevelt yet, and let the faculty and students and so forth aware of what we have to offer. So job number one is to make sure we get the information out to you, we're working on that, and to help you find collaborators, so you can do your research throughout the system.
Right, and Lisa Mazie, just stand up a second. Lisa Mazie is our new Chief Administrative Officer. She helped me as administrator for orthopedics, so she has a lot of connections up in the medical school of all the different faculty. We're going to try to work with the Office of Clinical Trials to find out, to make it easier for you to collaborate with clinical trials. We had one proposal in dermatology, for example, to use this as a site. And so we're trying to develop an easy way for you to link up with the statisticians, the support, the clinical trials, et cetera. Some of it will live here. I mean, you know, Dennis was talking about wet labs, and, you know, electron microscopes. But in terms of clinical research, there's going to have to be some staff here in clinical research and clinical trials, even if it's linked up with the system. And we're going to feel our way through this for what makes sense. As I said before, there's a lot of common sense to this. We don't want to have a rigid program. We want to see what's vibrant, what's alive, and what works. So we'd like your feedback on it also.
Thank you.
Well, if there are no other questions, I have some cool pictures of the new signage that's going up next month, if anyone wants to see it, I'll talk to you afterwards. Thank you very much.